Welcome to the school committee meeting of March 31st, 2021. This meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if need be. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I think tonight's meeting is to meet our candidate for the Director of Business and Finance vacancy. Superintendent's recommendation for the Director of Business and Finance, the superintendent reported eight candidates applied for the position of Business and Finance. The superintendent said four candidates were brought forward to be interviewed by the search committee. The search committee consisted of school committee members Chris Howard, Fred Small, Superintendent Simonak, Assistant Superintendent Jeff, Judge Farrow, and interim Business Director of Business Services, John Tuffey. Two of the four candidates failed to show up for their scheduled interviews. Superintendent Simonak recommended John Stambruch as the finalist and prime candidate for the position. So with great pleasure, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Stambruch. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Stambruch.
Thank you for coming this evening. The committee is here, John. We'd like to interview you and give you some, probably hit you with some questions and stuff, but if you'd like to have an opening statement, we'd be more than happy to hear it.
Yeah, just I'd like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to come here and meet everyone and apply for this position. I'm not really a long-winded type of guy, so it's kind of just, I'm just excited about the chance to apply for this position, and thank you again.
Jeff, George, or either one of the two, Fred, Chris, would like to have any questions or discussions or how they came to their decisions?
So I'll just, I'll just speak on behalf of the group. We interviewed, we offered four people interviews, two of those candidates. One candidate called and had a family emergency, which we rescheduled to make sure he had an adequate opportunity to come in. He did not show for that interview. Another candidate had an interview, and that candidate failed to show. We did interview two candidates who were very qualified for the position. After discussion, the five of us submit to you, John, as a qualified business manager who will help us, in my opinion, lead us with a solid business plan, financial plan for the future, something that I think is desperately needed for this regional school district, something that we haven't had in my tenure as a principal and as a superintendent. We've struggled to put forth a plan that both towns can agree upon or see where we're going. I think John's qualities in municipal finance and his passion for school finance, if you ask him that question, where he started with that, was he truly wants to be a school business manager, ended up, and I'm going to say on the wrong side of the tracks, in municipal finance or in administration. He's a numbers guy, self-admitted numbers geek. He likes to do numbers on weekends, and that's why, I mean, I feel very comfortable working with him. I think he will support our office well. He will support his people in my office well, and I think he would support this district very well. So I, we present to you, I think it was unanimous, Fred, Chris, John, George, myself hammered him with some solid questions, and we're very comfortable with his candidacy in presenting as our only finalist to this committee.
Mr. Howard and Mr. Small and Mr. Farrow, do you have anything to add? What did you think of the interview process? Would you like to discuss it? Go ahead, Fred.
I'll, nothing prepared, but John is a very well-rounded candidate. He ties a lot of strong experience, both from the municipal side and the school side. So he understands both, granted, never within a region, but I think that's just something that obviously you have the brain power and the capability to learn very easily. In the candidates that we were able to speak with, there was a very clear choice with his background, with his experience, and it was John. It wasn't, you know, something we had to struggle with, and nothing negative against the other candidate, it was just that his strengths were so overpowering in comparison.
Thank you, Mr. Small, Mr. Howard.
Yeah, so, I mean, I agree with everything that's been shared up to this point. I think the two things are, one, it's a, it's a little bit of an interesting dynamic, right, because as a school committee, just based upon the way it has to go, we have to fulfill the appointment. But ultimately, you know, his manager, so to speak, is Jeff. And so, you know, I think kind of listening to Jeff and George and John and really understanding what they're looking for in terms of someone to join the team, I thought was really helpful and ascertaining, you know, John's potential fit. I think the only question I think would be helpful for John to hit the committee with, and Jeff alluded to the same question, was basically if you can just kind of share, as Jeff said, and I think we heard the same thing, you know, your passion for finance and within the school system, and just kind of share the why behind some of that. I think that might be helpful for the committee to hear, rather than from me or Jeff, from you directly.
Sure. So the, in Mansfield, I was the Finance Director, and I had applied for the, an opening in the school business manager's job position. I was a finalist for that position, and I, you know, was getting ready for a final interview, and unfortunately, the town manager was, was let go, I guess, I'm trying to, he was, he was no longer employed with the town, and they needed someone to kind of step in and kind of take over and kind of right the ship while they looked for another town manager, another town manager. So that, I was, it seems like it was, it's a weird thing now, but I was going this way when I was pulled the other way. I think that's what Mr. Simonak was saying earlier. So I was able to fill in and be the, the acting town manager and also the Director of Finance for the town, and also the town accountant for nine to 10 months. I was able to help the town get, go through, get through that. That's what I like to do, that's where, you know, where my head is at, if you will. It's, I can do other things, and I don't mind doing other things, and I have other tasks that I can perform, but, I mean, this is, this is what I like to do, that's why I get up in the morning is to do, is to do the numbers. I can do other things, but I'd rather do that if, if given the chance. And COVID, quite frankly, has given me pause, a year of COVID, has given me pause to kind of step back and say, what do I really want to do? And this is what I really want to do. So when the opportunity came up, I felt it was important to go for it.
George or Mr. Tuffey? Either George, go ahead.
Yeah, I just think also the diversification of the background and the experience is what really piqued my interest because, and then also part of my role in this committee was just to figure out, is there a fit? So when we talk about fit, we are still in the human dynamic, we're still in the human relationship aspect of it. And then I think one of the questions that was asked was, how do you fit in a team of a leadership team? And I think one of, you know, one of the answers was, I am there to support. I am there to give the vision, I am there to give the long-range plans, but when it comes to principles and what principles want to do, or when it comes to the superintendent or the assistant superintendent and what we want to do, it was, it wasn't, it has to be done this way. It was, I'll show you, I'll explain it to you, these are the things that happen from a financial aspect, and it wasn't, it was more of, but I understand my role as part of the team, I understand my role as part of support. I think what also is a benefit is, is that the time that was spent as acting town manager, as now town manager, sort of allowed John to wear many different hats. That's just what the nature of that role is. When you go up into a central office and you only have minimal hats, people then, you then are ready to take on different tasks as they come through. And I think that was one of the strengths that drew us to John also, is his ability, his diverse background, and his ability to wear the different hats while having a keen focus on the numbers and the mission and the vision of where we need to go from a financial standpoint.
John, you good?
Just very quickly, there are 400 and some odd school districts in Massachusetts. Every one of them has a business manager. But business managers for regional school districts need a different skill set, a skill set that John has. All business managers need to be familiar with DESI and the regulations that come from DESI. Those are the people that George and Jeff tear their hair out over because they're the ones who make those regulations. As a regional school district, we also have to answer the Department of Revenue, because the Division of Local Services regulates us. We have to file information with them just as if we were the town of Hanson. We file those, what we call A and D, the Town Calls, free cash. We have to be audited and provide the same kind of information that the town does. Now, those are sort of unique. We, a business manager in a town system, they just have to, they have, just have to ma, they just have to balance their numbers to the town accountant. Here, we have, we have the general ledger as well, and we have to deal with that. We have to produce payroll, we have to file tax forms and provide quarterly tax payments to our government. We have to do all those things that Town Hall tends to support schools with. So to find somebody who hasn't familiar with that, who at the end of the year understands he has to write account back, he has about 1099s and W2s, those are things that John has lived with for quite some time. Those are not things that the average business manager deals with. Average business manager just says, yeah, the town accountant takes care of it and walks away. So having somebody with those, with that skill set is very important, and we're fortunate if, I believe, we find somebody who's interested in using those skills for a school district as opposed to them.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Fred, then we're going to open it up to the committee.
One thing I forgot that I didn't want to mention, he's also sat in our chairs as an elected school committee member in the town of Halifax.
Nice.
Understands what, a little bit of what we go through, maybe not as a regional district, but as a school committee member, so, yes, wanted to add that as well.
God bless him for that. Committee members, questions for the candidate? Mr. Jones.
John, welcome, and thanks, I think it's great that you've seen Hanson and how it works, I think that's a great asset. I just had one question with your resume. You listed employment from 2009 to 2020 with the town of Mansfield. Was there also some time with the town of Cohasset?
Yes, that's, that's on there too. Is there, it is not, yes, further down, it's from 2011 to 2011. So it was in, a short time, I was in Cohasset.
Okay, it just shouldn't come up on the, what was sent to me.
Oh, okay. It was, for about nine months or so, I was in the town of Cohasset as the Finance Director.
Okay.
The, the, at the time, the town of Mansfield didn't want to create a Finance Director position, there wasn't one, and that was something that I felt like I could do and I wanted to explore. When they said they didn't want to create that position, I looked to Cohasset, Cohasset has a Finance Director. I went there for, I think from January to November of 2011. Mansfield decided to entice me to come back and create the position for me, and so when they, they did.
Okay, so that's on here, on the resume that we have?
It is, Mike.
Okay.
I didn't notice either. It's on page five or 14.
Fourth from the bottom.
Okay.
And it's like the sixth or seventh line down, it says.
I just saw, all I see is where it says, Town of Mansfield, October 2009 to January.
It's under the Town of Hanson section. I didn't see it until just now.
But when it says employment, it says October 2009 to January 2020, that's what I didn't understand. It made it seem like, I just didn't see where it said Cohasset.
It's under the Town of Hanson, so on page four.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't see it until like literally right now. So it's kind of weird the way we're seeing it, I don't know if that's how you put it in the system. I don't, we don't actually have a copy of your resume.
Oh, okay.
Probably how it was actually, yeah, I don't think we have that. I think it's just how it was input.
Okay. Maybe I imported incorrectly, but that's, that's on my resume.
Mike, you good?
Yep.
Anyone else? John.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Stambruch. I actually have a question for Jeff, if I could, just before the, I asked Mr. Stambruch about the other applicants. Aside from the two who were no-shows, were any of them school business administrator licensed?
No.
None of them?
The two, one was, one of the no-shows was licensed in Rhode Island. One of them was licensed in Connecticut, and the other applicant was not licensed. Mr. Stambruch's license is ready for review as of today, or as of the other day. John contacted me when, after he applied, and I told him about licensure. We walked him through the process with DESI. He had to take tests, which were not available because of COVID, and I believe John got the results back just recently, and he passed both tests that he had to have, submitted his license. I was able to expedite that, and it usually takes one to two to three business days, depending on the flavor at DESI. So John is eligible for licensure and should have that license within, within this calendar week, if not by the end of next week. But all his documents are in, we looked at them, and he should be licensed by DESI, so. The other applicants weren't.
What license is that?
School Business Administrator.
Okay. And can I ask the experience of the other finalist?
I don't think that's appropriate in this, in this interview. It's an interview for this candidate. It could be up for discussion.
Okay.
I would, I would be very happy to discuss after in discussion, but I have a candidate here as a finalist, and I'm uncomfortable talking about another candidate while he's sitting here.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Chair.
Go ahead, John.
I wanted to give a chance. So last year, this position was posted, and I was a participant in the interviews for that process. So I was given a question to ask of that candidate, so I thought I would sort of bring that question back to you. And it was, what would your current staff and coworkers say about you and your work ethic or style? And I'm sorry, I don't have a mic, I'm sharing a mic here, so if you can't hear me, I'll speak.
Thank you for the question. I would, I would think that they, they would like my style. I'm a, I'm not a hardcore disciplinarian, but we get stuff done. We're, I'm task-oriented, and I feel we can, you can do that with a general joie de viv, you don't have to, have to be angry all the time. And I have a, kind of a collegial, collective type of style that I try to use, I don't, but when we, when I have to, when we have to get things done, I do get them done. So I would say that my, again, I don't like using the word staff because I, we all work together, we just have different positions in the town, but the people that I work with, I would feel that they would, would support me, and they would say that I'm easy to work with, and we do get things done.
Okay.
Mr. Colletti?
Do you have any background using Munis?
So in Mansfield, when I, when I was hired back in 2009, they had just transferred from Munis to a new system, Softrite. So, and it didn't go well, unfortunately. So I had a lot, had to go back in and, and do the translations from, from Munis to Softrite. I was able to do that and work with Munis, the old, old style of it. And then just when I left Mansfield, we were reintroducing Munis after 10 years with Softrite. So I was in all the meetings in order to set up the crosswalk and the different crossovers between the Softrite and Munis and setting up all the background stuff. So the, when I, when I was in Mansfield, we did not use Munis, but I have extensive knowledge, setting it up. Implementing it and then transferring it over on both ends of my, of my time in Mansfield. I do understand the functionality of it, I do understand how to do certain things in it.
John?
As a school business administrator, would you be joining the Mass School Business Officers, Masbo?
Masbo, yes.
Organization? Do you intend to join that?
Yes.
Anyone else? Go ahead, John.
Just some questions around regional school districts and funding. What would your experience or level of knowledge on hold harmless as it relates to Chapter 70 and state aid, specific to Whitman-Hanson?
Specifically to here, I, the number is something like $4 million, if I remember right, and hold harmless is money that the, the state has given in the past in Chapter 78, and that actually the, the, the region doesn't, doesn't actually get that, should be getting that, but they don't take that away from you once they've already given it. I'm trying to, so if we were to deregionalize, for example, that money would go, would go away because this, you know, the state would say, okay, now you've deregionalized, and, you know, that money isn't there anymore. But that's, I guess that's the answer.
Anyone else? An entertaining motion to appoint Mr. John Stambruch to the position of Director of Business and Finance effective July 1st, 2021, pending negotiations.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Seconded, made by Mr., small seconded by Mr. Boyce. John, go ahead.
No, chair, Fred, you can comment if you wish, you made a motion.
No, I made the motion, but discussion.
Okay. How do you see yourself working with the district treasurer? Mr. Leary, we saw him in the last meeting, and how would your interaction be with him in regards to, you know, finances in the district? And do you see, you know, any changes in how the former business manager has been working with the district treasurer?
So I'm a certified municipal treasurer, and I'm also a certified municipal collector. So I understand his job and I understand what he needs to do, so I think I'd be able to, to work with him. Also, when I was the acting town manager in Mansfield, the acronym was SEMRAC, Southeastern Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communication Center. They were starting up, there's a, it's a, it's a group of towns doing a consortium regional communication center, and we needed a treasurer, so I actually interviewed Mr. Leary and hired him for the SEMRAC, so I do know him, and I, I interviewed him and picked him, and have actually voted for him.
Mr. Small?
If I could ask, just a follow-up clarifying question. So you actually understand the role of a treasurer, and if our current treasurer was not performing properly, because we actually would not know that, you'd be able to pick that up and understand it and make the corrections?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one last question. I think the elephant in the room is that you currently work for the Town of Hanson, so now you're applying for a position with the district.
Yes.
To me, that gives the appearance of a conflict of interest. I just know with the Masbo Code of Conduct, it does state, part of the Code of Conduct is to avoid conflicts of interest and/or the appearance of a conflict of interest in a professional relationship. So I have concerns about that relationship. There are people on both sides who may have preconceived notions, or, or do perhaps, and expectations derived from the relationships that are naturally created from your current position. There may be loyalties, bias.
Is this a statement or a question?
I'm making comment.
Okay.
In open meeting discussion right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So this is my, what I see as the candidate that is brought forth, and I don't believe this starts with a clean slate for our district. I think it starts with some past history that may not be in the best interest of the district.
Mr. Small?
Could I ask Ms. Byers, if you could expand on that? And when you say that some people may view this as a conflict, could you expand on who would possibly feel that way?
I don't appreciate you asking me to clarify when I'm stating an opinion of something in open meeting, Mr. Small.
You're saying that this person would be bad for us, and I'm asking you why?
I think the real problem here is that more people aren't asking more questions about this interview process right now, to tell you the truth.
Okay. Chris Howard?
So I have a comment. So I think there was five people that went through an interview process of Mr. Stambruch. So if the committee feels that that was completely a waste of time and there's no trust of the five people that did it, then so be it. We can conduct multiple interviews over and over and over again. But I do think there was a process where there was a request for those that were interested in doing the interviews. I know I myself said I'd be happy to do it, however, if someone else would like to do it, they're more than welcome to do it. But I would hope that if we're doing an interview, and as I suggested, ultimately, the person, we have to do an appointment, but the person hiring this position is the superintendent, they're working for the superintendent, that to me is where the accountability for us lies. I'm looking for the superintendent to make sure he makes the right hiring decision. I think the other issue that we have here is, we do not have I think the other issue that we have here is we do not have another qualified candidate that would allow us to move forward, I think in the spirit of what you just described. So to me, it boils down to the very simple notion of, we have a candidate, yes, it's probably not perfect. You know, I think when I saw the name, I said, oh, boy, you know, this will be, you know, some, this is going to turn into a political discussion. I think our job, the superintendent's job, is to make sure we find the most qualified candidate and hire them, period. So I think we have that, and I'm hoping that's what we can move forward with.
Simonak?
Can I just, are we done asking John questions? We're in discussion right now, and I don't feel it's, if we're done asking questions, great, and it's open discussion, because the motion was made. But I don't want John, in the middle of discussion, have to come back and forth in this discussion. I feel it's school committee discussion. And on that point, you charged me with hiring the best possible candidate. I tried to find the best possible candidate, and sometimes it will ruffle feathers in other districts, other communities. Teachers have applied here from superintendent friends that I've had, and they have been really angry with me, and I've been very happy with those teachers, because we're trying to hire the best people. And I think, I think right now, out of the pool that we've had, John is the best candidate. I would not present a candidate that I didn't think would do a great job. And I know it's gonna, people are not going to be happy in both sides of the, of the towns. I did have a conversation with the two selectmen in Hanson. They are sorry to lose John if we take John, but they, they, the piece that came through from these two selectmen was character, character, work ethic, character, and numbers. That was it. That's all I needed to hear to present to you. He's a character man, he's a numbers man, he's trustworthy, and he will work his tail off to do his job. That's the person I'm presenting to you.
Further questions? I'm going to move to the vote. Don?
I would just like to respond. I, I feel the candidate's resume is worthy of the position. As I stated, I'm concerned about the conflict of interest. Through you, Chair, to Mr. Howard, you brought up the word political, so it does, that's, that's my reason for saying what I said, and that there may be some, some more tense moments in the future. I don't know. I don't know.
Anyone else?
Mr. Stamrock wants to say something.
Can I respond?
Don?
I can respond, so. I, just on the ethics thing, I did seek Ethics Commission advice, and there is a disclosure on file with the town clerk in Hanson.
I have a motion, the second, to appoint Mr. John Stamrock to the position of Director in Business and Finance effective July 1, 2021, pending negotiations. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. We'll see you in the future.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bob, you, you have nothing else. Jim Hardy's here.
Yeah. We have to adjourn.
Okay. An entertaining motion to adjourn.
Someone, second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Take a few minutes.